All right, let's call the meeting to order. As per the usual arrangement in this time of COVID, I have to read an opening statement, which is sort of a modified version of how we normally conduct the public hearing since we're also public here in City Hall and also remote on the web. So I will read this so everybody knows how we're going to proceed with the meeting this evening. So, good evening. This is the regularly scheduled May 13 meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. I am Scott Stocking, the chairman of the commission. Tonight, for the benefit of those in the audience, I am joined by city planner Jaden True and our public hearing transcriber. I'm also joined today by John Mead, Mim Evans, and Mike O'Shea. We have two people remote. Commissioners are remote right now, so Rebecca Holman and Adam Miskiel are remote. So we've got three present and two remote. So in adherence to Governor Pritzker's Executive Order 2021-09 related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the city of Geneva meetings are now a combination of in-person and virtual. The aforementioned executive orders limit gatherings to the lesser of 50 people or 50% of overall room capacity. This means no more than 29 individuals, including the public, commission, and staff, are allowed in the council chambers for all meetings. With that being said, meetings will continue to be virtually accessible to the public and members of the commission. Some who are elected do so at this meeting. As a requirement of the Open Meeting Act, I am required to be physically present at the meeting location. With our use of electronic meeting platform for this meeting, there may be some technical difficulties as we move through our agenda, so please bear with us. Meetings will also be livestreamed for the public to provide the ability to hear all discussion in real time. Testimony and roll call votes for the open meeting is also in real time. Please visit the city website for details on how to watch the meeting live. Individuals experiencing technical difficulties may email to go to admin@genova-il.us for assistance. While the public may be limited or restricted from attending the meetings in person, individuals wishing to provide public comment may do so in advance or during the meeting by sending an email to publiccomment@genova-il.us. In addition, individuals unable to attend in person due to gathering restrictions may be recognized during the meeting by accessing the meeting via the link provided in the meeting agenda found on the city's website at www.geneva-il.us. For more information about meeting procedures or providing public comment, please see notice regarding public meeting and public comment rule modification due to COVID-19, a link to which is provided on the agenda for the meeting this evening. A public hearing will be held tonight in this meeting for item 5A regarding the proposed text amendment to the B-3E business district. Every individual desiring to listen and/or participate in the meeting has been provided that opportunity through participation information included in the various public meeting notices and the agenda for this meeting. A public hearing notice and the same information will also be published in the Daily Herald 15 days prior to tonight's public hearing. All interested parties are invited to present testimony for and against petition and cross-examine witnesses presenting testimony for or against petition. At this point, I will describe the remote public hearing proceedings of the Planning and Zoning Commission for those of you who are not familiar with the process. First, the public hearing will be open to the petitioner, who will provide an overview of the contemplated text amendment and will present any supporting documents or exhibits. Following the presentation, commission members will have first opportunity to ask petitioner questions. After the initial questions by the commission members, members of the public will have an opportunity to present evidence and testimony for and against the application and cross-examine the petitioner. Public participants may provide testimony either through written comments or by speaking at the meeting. All members of the public providing evidence and testimony are also subject to cross-examination by other members of the public and/or the commission. Members speaking during the public hearing agree and understand that anything they say will be considered sworn testimony and affirmed to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Members of the virtual audience who wish to speak will be asked to use the raised hand feature through the virtual meeting platform. Audience members will then be called on, unmuted, and given an opportunity to comment. We ask that you state your name and address when it is your turn to speak. If you speak multiple times, please state your name each time. If your comment has already been made and your question has already been asked, it is not necessary to repeat it. We remind members of the public to refrain from bearing off-topic and direct comments to the subject matter. After providing comment, each speaker will be muted once again. Please note that there may be a slight delay between becoming unmuted and being able to begin speaking. All comments will be recorded so that written transcriptions and minutes can be prepared of this meeting. Just a reminder that all speakers are actually present their comments in a respectful and courteous manner. It should be mentioned that in the event that not all members of the public who have presented testimony during a lot of time in this meeting, the public hearing may be continued to a future meeting. Following public testimony, the petitioner will have an opportunity to answer questions and respond to any comments made from members of the public. The public hearing will then be closed, and the commission will begin their deliberation. In order to reduce background noise, I remind all commissioners joining virtually to mute themselves, except when addressing the commission. Commissioners joining virtually also need to state their name prior to speaking and prior to providing a roll call vote or to better assist our record keepers, for example, stocking, yea, nay, or abstain. Okay? So that's how we're going to proceed. That's how we've been doing it for, I guess, since November. So not much has changed on that front. So with that, Celeste, will you please call the roll?
We sure can. Evans?
Here.
Holman?
Holman here.
Madskeel?
Madskeel here.
Mead?
Mead here.
Slifka?
Here.
And Stocking?
Stocking here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Celeste. Next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Moved to approve the agenda.
Evans second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the April 8, 2021 meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Evans, moved to approve.
Slifka second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All right. So we have one public hearing on our docket this evening. It's the zoning ordinance text amendment. A text amendment to Section 11-6E-2, permitted uses, to add drugs and cosmetics store to the list of permitted uses in the B-3E business district, and a text amendment to Section 11-12-4, permitted signs in zoning districts, to allow electronic message board signs in the B-3 business district. Location is East State Street between Kane Street and Harrison Street. The applicant is Bill Bush of Geneva Pharmacy LLC. And you have some items on the record.
Yes, sir. So this evening, the contents of this file includes an application for zoning ordinance text amendments filed by Bill Bush of Geneva Pharmacy LLC, including a statement of the applicant. In addition, a report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated May 13, 2021, with attachments including a statement of the applicant and the East State Street Design Guidelines, also a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on April 28, 2021, for tonight's public hearing.
All right. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll hear from the applicant, Mr. Bush.
My name's Bill Bush. I'm located at 501 East State Street here in Geneva, Illinois. I'm here to present the aforementioned text amendment change for adding drugs and cosmetics store to the approved uses in the B-3E district and to request that the electronic content-changing signs are added to the approved signage for the same B-3E district. So I think it's important just to give a very brief introduction to who we are and why we're proposing these text amendment changes. So we are in the process of attempting to launch an independent retail pharmacy here in Geneva. After Riley Drugs closed their pharmacy operations in January of this year, there's actually no independent retail pharmacy options for the community of Geneva, but also no independent retail pharmacy options for the communities of St. Charles, Batavia, or West Chicago. Collectively, you have more than 100,000 people now in the Fox River Valley area who do not have an option for an independent retail pharmacy when they choose to have their health care provided by that type of provider. So Riley's staff, three of his six full-time employees have come to work for me in Lombard, Illinois. We wanted to make sure that they continue to have jobs and continue to be employed while we looked and tried to find a location here in Geneva. So we had simple goals in mind when we were looking for this location. We wanted to provide the community with an independent retail option. We wanted to be able to assist the long-term care and assisted living facilities that are growing in number and populations here within the community because they require compliance packaging that the chains and big box stores do not provide as part of their service offerings. We also wanted to consolidate, as we talked about, the health care support from Batavia, St. Charles, and West Chicago back here into Geneva, where it has been with Riley Drugs for many decades. And last, we wanted to ensure that there's equality in access to services. We provide free prescription delivery. We provide nationwide delivery for patients. So not only are they covered here when they're at home, but they're also covered as they travel and vacation around the country as needed. So those were our simple goals. I included a picture of Melissa. Many of you may have recognized her. She had actually worked at Riley Drugs for 13 years prior to its closing in January. She is very, very excited to be coming here and opening up her own store, hopefully in the near future, everything going well. So why do we need the zoning amendment text change? Because after an exhaustive search of the available real estate here in Geneva that met our location criteria, we were unable to identify another location within an alternate business district that already allowed for drug and cosmetic stores within its zoning that we would be able to locate the store within. Again, our location criteria were not extensive. They were very, very simple and modest. We needed between 1 and 2,000 square feet. We needed to be in an owner-occupied building. From a regulatory standpoint, pharmacies are highly regulated businesses. We require registration not only with the state but with the federal government. We require inspections on a routine basis. For us to be in a rental property is very concerning because we can't turn around and move out if our landlord decides to cancel our lease or our landlord wants to sell the building and have new tenants in the property. It takes us over a year to actually become licensed and up and running for an individual location, so we need to be in an owner-occupied building so we can control our own destiny. We needed visibility. We needed access for our patients, so we needed a property that would allow us ADA-compliant access for patients who are on walkers or limited mobility. And then last, we needed a location that was central to the community because many of our patients will actually frequent the pharmacy multiple times in a month. Some patients will even frequent the pharmacy multiple times in a week. So again, I've listed here a collection of the properties that we vetted and thoroughly evaluated that were for sale commercially during our evaluation period. And unfortunately, the only property we were able to identify that met all of our criteria was the 501 East State Street. We worked very, very closely with the Economic Development Department here in the city of Geneva to ensure that we left no stone unturned. So not only did we identify and vet these sites, but we also asked for help to ensure that we weren't missing out on any sites in areas where this use was already zoned appropriate. So next, when we look at this particular property, I'm sorry, I have a little soft place in my heart for this picture. We were actually able to dig up a photograph of what 501 East State Street looked like in 1890. It was originally a farmhouse on the corner, and the house has withstood more than 150 years. We actually believe the house dates back to the 1850s, but records unfortunately are not very well kept at that point. But we were able to find this photograph. Just to also show you the extent that we've done research to ensure that we're able to reuse this property and redevelop it in a way that was respectful to its heritage, we also pulled up what other retail locations look like in the community over the years so that we would have an idea of, from a design characteristics perspective, what we could do to ensure that this property kept to its original design aesthetics. So again, if you look on the left of this particular slide, you see what the existing elevation looks like today. On the right, we're showing you how we're proposing to adapt and reuse that existing original structure from the 1800s and create our retail pharmacy. We're actually proposing that we would be removing parts of the building that have been added over time that took away from that original look and feel of the farmhouse. We're going to bring back the covered porch. We're going to bring back the original footprint of the original building for our proposed use. So we think this is in line with the criteria to adapt and reuse properties within the East State Street corridor when you're going to try to use them for a specialty retail So why would a drugs and cosmetics store fit within the B-3E? Well, quite frankly, B-3E already contains a large number of specialty retail utilizations. You have antique stores, you have gift shops, you have florists shops, you have hobby shops. What do all these things have in common? Low number of patrons at any one time. They're specialty retail. These are not high-volume retail establishments. A low need for parking. We know that land use is of particular concern in that area. There are not large parking lots available, so we need uses that require a low number of parking spaces. Customers only stay for a short period of time in these types of stores. We need stores with a small footprint. So again, generally, you're talking about stores less than 2,000 square feet because it keeps with the original building's size and scope within that part of the community. And then last, businesses that need to be close to their customers because their customers develop an attachment and frequent the businesses, you know, often. So you need to be close to that business to create that touch with the customers. All these characteristics are the same characteristics you find in an independent retail pharmacy. We have a low number of patients who come through the pharmacy at any one point in time. We have a low need for parking because of that. Customers are in and out as they get their prescriptions filled, as they get their counseling from their local pharmacist. We feel that the retail use of a drug and cosmetic store fits with the other approved uses within this space and fits within the niche of specialty retail that was defined as a purpose for the B-3E district. Lastly, the comprehensive plan allows for the commercial development of this property, but currently, the B-3E district is the only district in the city of Geneva where a drug and cosmetic store is not an approved use under any circumstance. In many of the districts, it's already approved use, and two other of the districts, it's approved through a special use process. This is the only district within the city in which this particular use is completely unavailable unless a zoning amendment change is made, thus why we petition for that today. The second part of our petition has to deal with requesting an electronic content-changing sign also be approved within the B-3E district. Electronic content-changing signs have come a long way and are technologically more sophisticated than what they were in the past. And so we believe that electronic content-changing signs have become more mainstream, have become more what patrons, customers, and patients expect in terms of how they're communicated with by their individual establishments for time-sensitive items. So currently, the electronic content-changing signs are also approved in every other district within the city of Geneva. The only district in which the electronic content-changing signs are not permitted is the B-3E. So they're permitted for the districts to the east of the B-3E district. They're permitted for the districts to the west of the B-3E district. And patients or customers approaching the B-3E district from either direction actually encounter electronic content-changing signs as they drive down State Street from either direction. So all we're requesting is that there be continuity in the allocation of that particular tool and that electronic content-changing signs be allowed within the B-3E district. We are not asking for any exceptions to the existing electronic content-changing sign rules in terms of how large they can be, what percentage of the overall signage they represent, where they can be placed on the property, et cetera. We're just asking that they be permitted so that it can be consistent with the other business districts within the city. Lastly, again, we just wanted to show you an example of what an electronic content-changing sign might look like on the property. Again, please, this is not to scale. This is just giving you a very quick representation of what that might be. There is an existing aerial sign already on this property. The sign is in a state of disrepair, and the sign would conflict with the widening of the State Street Road, I.D.O.T. project, which is scheduled to begin next year in 2022. So our proposal, you know, if allowed, would also allow us to potentially relocate this sign and potentially make the sign conforming to the current aerial sign requirements as we were to include that. And then last, we just wanted to give you an idea of our respect for the communities that we're a part of and our respect for wanting to ensure that the continuity of those communities remains intact. So three of our other pharmacies in communities in the Chicagoland area, we have also remodeled, and we have also engaged with the communities to ensure that they were respectfully done. The first pharmacy in Lombard, Illinois, which is the closest one here to the city of Geneva, is celebrating its 50th year in business this year. It was originally opened in 1971. And when we chose to move that pharmacy for the first time in 47 years, three years ago, we moved into a building that was originally built in 1948. It would have been more cost-effective for us to move into a brand-new building, but we moved into a building that had been a part of the community for as long as the pharmacy had. And again, we feel that as we remodeled and as we designed that pharmacy, we were respectful of the heritage of that building and the heritage of the community that was involved in. The same goes for Main Street Pharmacy in Mantino, Illinois, which is located in the downtown business district there, one block off of Main Street. We took two old parking garages, automobile garages, and we ended up remodeling them to create a brand-new pharmacy in the middle of their downtown business district. And again, respectful of the community around, respectful of what it, you know, looks like, and made sure that we created something that the community would be proud of. And then lastly, our most recently opened store was down in Wilmington, Illinois. So now that we have one on Route 66, I had to get one on Lincoln Highway, right? We can't be picky here. So again, you'll see a similar design style and criteria that we used for that remodel down in Wilmington. But in each one of these three cases, instead of building something brand-new from scratch, we've chosen to remodel and try to work in to an existing location in that community to reuse and repurpose structures that had already been a part of that community for a long time, as we're seeking to do with 501 East State Street. Why we are making the petition to make the zoning amendment change is we feel that this is a great opportunity to repurpose and to reuse that existing building so that it can continue to contribute to the community for years and decades to come. With that, that's all I brought for my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you or the community have with respect to the petition.
All right. Thank you very much.
Stop.
Anybody? Yes, John?
First of all, what is a pharmacy and cosmetic store? Is there a definition for that, or is that just a, is it a specific category that one can look? What other types of businesses would fall within that now made a permitted use?
So within the code, and again, I defer to Jaden, but it does not appear to be defined specifically or more specifically than that within the existing municipal code here in the city of Geneva. Our intended use is for an independent retail pharmacy to dispense ethical pharmaceuticals. We're not looking to do marijuana. We're not looking to do anything. We're looking to do an independent retail pharmacy, just as the community has appreciated with Riley Drugs for 55 years.
Right. And I appreciate your thoughtful presentation and your commitment to the niche that you think that, you know, you can play a role in. So Jaden?
John, if I could jump in real quick. So the reason the drugs and cosmetics store was chosen is because that's how it's labeled in the other sections of Geneva's code. So just to keep that consistent, we decided to keep that title.
So it's an undefined term, but it's meant to be...
Drugstore.
Obviously, we can't articulate every business that would fall within that, but, okay. Related to the signage, as I understand it, the district to the east, to the west, excuse me, allows message board signing, time and temperature only. The district to the west, or to the east, sorry. Am I east and west confused? District to the east allows message board signing. This district does not. So this would be kind of a transitionary district from a restrictive message board to an all-out message board signing. It's between the two, so you're now going to allow it and enclose the gap. I find myself thinking that I could support message board signing, but I feel like we should have a discussion about whether it should be a special use or not because I think it's a highly residential area. I mean, you don't have to walk too far from these. You know, message board signings with light and everything else create more visual noise than other types of signs. So I think it's just something in my mind that we might need to talk about on a case-by-case basis as a special use as opposed to just allowing message boarding.
Yeah, I mean, you could have, again, this is a reuse of an existing building on an existing lot, but you could have a lot consolidation and stuff where somebody come in with a larger structure with onsite parking and so forth.
Right.
And that can happen in the district and certainly is, you know, due to the configuration is definitely an option that could happen. That way, a special permit might be in order for that.
And I know it's only 18 lots today, but if everybody, each of those 18 lots decided that message board signing was the way to go, it would be pretty visually noticeable as you went through that area. It'd be a lot of noise.
So to my knowledge, the zoning ordinance does not require a special use for those types of signs in the other commercial districts.
I understand that.
And also, I mean, the scenario you described could theoretically happen in the B-4 district, which is kind of patchy along either side of East State Street. So I just want the commission to be aware that that would be kind of above and beyond what the code requires right now, just for this specific district and nowhere else. So I just wanted to point that out, I guess.
Good.
I have some questions for you also, Jaden. And I know you don't have that much history here, but why is this particular section of East State Street treated differently on these two elements? I read the design guidelines. I know the desire for specialty retail and all that, but I don't understand why this particular type of retail use was excluded. Could you explain that?
Yeah, so we believe that this specific zoning district is different just for these 18 parcels because of the existing typology that was there for residential homes. It was thought that there may have been a plan in the past where the vision was to keep that small-scale look... keep that small scale look of single family homes along this section where those existed, but add that commercial component as called for in the comprehensive plan.
Right.
So it was to, we believe it was to keep that urban design of the single family homes, that scale, that kind of neighborhood feel, but to bring that commercial component into.
I understand that. What I don't understand is why this particular loot use was considered incompatible with doing that.
That's, we are unsure of that as well. I, I don't believe we really discovered why in our research. Because yeah, as you mentioned, it's allowed in B one, B four, B five, but the B three district is not allowed.
And if the desire is to keep the small scale of the buildings and the reuse of the existing buildings, as long as the use is willing to reuse a building, I don't understand what the problem would be with what that particular use within the building was.
And I think that's the main question that we're, that we need to ask ourselves this evening is, you know, why is that and would that be acceptable?
Now, is there, are there restrictions that, for example, could Mr. Bush decide to knock the whole building down and build something from scratch, build his drugstore from scratch, or would that not be allowed?
That, that would be allowed, but it would need to be within the parameters of the setback, slot coverage, et cetera.
Right, but he would not have to do anything to maintain the residential structures that are there now.
Technically, no.
So the fact that he does plan to do that furthers that goal without any real requirement for him to do so. So this might be a particularly fortunate applicant. Okay, now let's talk about the signs for a minute. Why was there a feeling that there could be signs with, is it because of that same residential feel to not have the electronic message board signs in this small strip and have it on either side to some degree, one degree or another?
Again, we're not specific, we're not really sure why this specific section of State Street was called out for specific uses and signage, but, you know, we do believe that it does go back to that vision of keeping that, you know, small scale, single family, but with bringing in the commercial aspect of it, including the signage.
Thank you.
Yes, Michael?
Just a few questions. I, I have the same, I was curious about why it was excluded originally and I, I thought it was interesting in the, in the guidelines that in a, in a survey of the residents, a pharmacy was one of the things they suggested as, as desirable for that area. But anyway, so, and regarding just Mim's question about knocking the building down and replacing it, so that, that would be allowed even with any permitted use then currently in this, in this area, right?
That's correct.
And on the message signs, this would be not limited to time and, and temperature, but it would be any message, right, in this, in this area? So could every lot, the way this is written, have an electronic sign then potentially?
In this zoning district, that is possible, given that it can be no taller than 10 feet.
So are, so are there any, are there any regulations in terms of spacing between electronic signs?
Not currently in our code.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Rebecca?
I, I also had a question about the signage.
Rebecca, can you speak up a little bit? It's kind of hard to hear you.
Oh, is that, can you hear me any better?
That's a little better.
Good. Is that any better?
It's a little bit.
Okay, so with the note in here about the, with the design and development guidelines, with the white, they talked about signs being internally illuminated with a white light source. That would be consistent with what some of the plans are for further east, right? Is that my understanding that, or sort of the design and development guidelines?
So those guidelines, what we believe it's asking is that the signs be internally illuminated or at least have the lighting behind the letters that's on, that's on the sign. So I'm trying to think of some examples. It wouldn't be the, necessarily the electronic message board. It would be more of your typical cabinet with internal lighting inside and then the sign outside.
Yeah. So is that, and I'm just kind of asking, is that seen to be as less pervasive, I guess, or less assaulting to the eye? I mean, it, it seems to be sort of a safer choice if that's also what we're going to be using as our guidelines for the, for the further east development guidelines.
Well, it, it would be different from an electronic message board type. As we've mentioned, the electronic message boards, they can change their message every think five minutes it is in the code. So it wouldn't necessarily be flashing as opposed to the other signs don't have that capability and it could be viewed as maybe being less busy, I guess.
Yeah.
It's not an LED board.
Okay, and is there any limit to, like with the electronic signs, is there any limit to the amount of, of different colors or things like that that could be, I mean, the one that he showed was just blue and white. Is that pretty much what it would be, just the blue and white? It would be different depending on the rotation?
I think you have the time to respond to that.
So if I can provide one additional, because I, I've heard several questions regarding the sign and, you know, specifically the intent or purpose of the sign relative to the district and what the goal is. Again, we want to be a responsible member of the community. We're entering in now and I, I look forward to celebrating the 50 year anniversary for this pharmacy here in Geneva. The reason for asking for an electronic content changing sign in the first place was if we keep the existing structure the way it is, there's a limited number of windows. In a typical retail type establishment, you would have a larger percentage of your facing frontage compromised of windows, oftentimes even, you know, floor to ceiling windows so that your customers, your patients could inter, engage with you as they're driving by, as they're walking by, et cetera, within the community. In keeping with the goal of trying to keep this structure in as much of its original form as possible, because I think that's what the goal of this particular part of the community was, it really limits the window frontage for a retail store. So we're, we originally asked for the electronic changing content sign to give us another avenue to communicate information to patients like flu shots available, COVID shots available, you know, congratulations seniors 2021, you know, whatever people would typically put in a window sign, we would have the opportunity to be able to place on an electronic sign because this particular structure in its original form was a farmhouse, wasn't intended to be a retail location. We want to keep that look and feel of the community building the same. That's why we're petitioning for the electronic changing sign. The signs that we would use are capable of doing multiple colors, are capable of doing other things like that, but our goal is to communicate oftentimes to an aged or to an elderly patient population. We're going to be keeping it pretty simple and pretty straightforward because that's what they need to be able to see as they're walking by or as they're driving by. So unfortunately, I don't know if that fully answers your question, but hopefully provides additional perspective.
I just want to throw out an idea. I am less bothered by the electronic sign itself than I am by the idea that it's up on that pylon. What about an electronic sign that was down lower and.
Monument sign?
Yeah, monument sign, and we could allow that within the district rather than the up high.
Complete height.
Yeah, that's what I would find distracting about an electronic sign at that height.
Well, so the current sign for Shabby Deschique actually exceeds, it's a nonconforming sign. If I were to come back and ask for an application today, it would be disallowed because it's over 10 feet tall. So anything we would do would definitely bring the sign height down from what it is today. A monument sign could be facilitated in that particular area. The biggest challenge would be if you, if you can think geographically, that's on a bend in State Street. That's one of the reasons why the I dot project is going to help to widen that and straighten that out. You know, the monument sign may not be visible to everyone from either side, but I would be happy to explore that. I have no great love for the pylon sign. The design guidelines for East State Street actually strongly discourage the use of pylon signs within the district and I recognize that. The only reason I had shown it as such is to keep with the way it has looked. It's had that sign for many, many years, decades even. So I kept the pylon sign there to keep with the look that the building has had. I would, I would not be opposed to doing a monument sign there if, if that's the direction that the commission feels is most appropriate. I just need the ability to, to have the, or I ask for the ability to have the content changing to help me offset the lack of the traditional window signs that you might find in a retail establishment.
Right. That and just the overall wall space you have on the building is limited, right?
Extremely. It's a small building.
Building, so it's hard to get a, a wall mounted sign that's visible, you know, at this location or anywhere on the street because if you're doing a rehab on an existing building.
Right.
It's a limited wall space.
We're proposing to potentially have one crest kind of logo sign up there similar to what we saw at the very first stage of our presentation.
Yeah, you showed that, yeah.
But yes, the, the wall spaces as limited as the windows.
Yeah.
It was a farmhouse.
As far, I would feel comfortable with having electronic signs if they were monuments. If they were to fill in with more of them along the street, I do not feel comfortable with mending up as, as on pylons, a bunch of electronic signs, but I think the monument sign would be workable.
As, as a permitted sign, not as a special use, you're thinking?
Yeah, I don't know why, why we would make it a special use other than if it was to limit the number.
Right.
And to me, that doesn't seem fair that you say, well, this, you know, that, that doesn't seem fair to me to arbitrarily say some buildings can have it and others can't. Either you allow it or you don't.
Well, and I appreciate that. I, I do think these are smaller lots, so the, as opposed to some of the other business districts where those would be spread out farther, these are residential, small residential lots. If you had 18 of them and I'm on each side of either the street, it would be, it would be pretty close together.
They would be.
It would be hard to read each of them because there'd be so many. And I'm not saying that's where we're going, but I do, I do appreciate the reasons you've articulated for wanting one.
Yes, sir. I, I can say that in other municipalities that I've developed in, the particular question about the number is usually addressed with a linear footage of roadway. This particular property would potentially still be allowed because we actually have frontage on two roads. We have frontage on State Street, but then we also have frontage on Woodlawn.
Right.
Right there, so the cumulative frontage would allow this particular property to potentially have one where other properties that only have frontage on State Street, you know, may not have enough frontage to allow or permit a sign if you were to want to include that. That's not in the proposed text amendment that I submitted, but it would be to a way to address that I've seen in other municipalities.
That, that makes sense because that allows you to directly address what the problem is, which is having them too close together.
Correct.
It's not arbitrary. There's a reason behind it. It's not just saying the first three that apply, get it.
Yeah. Rebecca, do you have anything further?
No, I was only asking about the variety of colors and things just because, you know, if it's for other businesses that would also want that type of a sign, that it would end up being like a, you know, just an overwhelming visual thing as you're driving down the street. But I do like the idea of the monument sign.
Okay.
I think that makes sense.
Okay. Adam, do you have anything?
But Joseph, one question, more for staff. The only question I have is, do we have timing as far as the widening of State Street in that area by I dot? Do we have?
Say that one more time, Adam. You were cutting out.
Oh, sorry. I was just asking to see if there was any timeline from I dot on the expansion and when we should anticipate that.
Um, you know, I'm not for certain, so I don't want to actually give a date, but I know it would, I think.
It's been a long time coming.
I've heard, I've heard different, I've heard different dates, but can I leave it as vague as saying the near future? I'm not for certain, I'm sorry.
It's up to the state, so, yeah, I mean, Geneva's funded that project for years. It's just the state hasn't built it. That's the short answer. Are they, where are they, is it along the road? Are they taking a lot of additional property? I mean, I haven't seen any of the road alignments or something. Do you have any idea of that in terms of, are they going out to the sidewalk, just in general? I mean, I, I know I'm asking a specific question, but.
Public Works, Public Works has provided me with the approved I dot plan.
Okay.
That would require relocation of the sidewalk at this particular property location.
Okay.
Because they are making the turn into Woodlawn more gradual.
All right.
So they, they have an approved plan. I was told by Public Works at a preliminary concept review meeting that I dot was going to be beginning the work on the project next year.
Okay. So they have the right of way. They're not asking for additional.
They are asking for additional easement and they are asking for additional, because that's why they brought it to my attention, is for this particular property, they would be asking to move there right of way and move their easements back.
Okay, so they haven't even gotten through that step yet?
No, they haven't. They were just wanting me to consider it in my plans.
I just had a, I just had one real general question is in terms of the parking requirements for this use, what are the parking requirements?
So I believe that Bill is going to be working on a parking agreement with Gen Ho, is that correct?
Correct. In the purchase of the property, we have a, a easement with the Gen Ho, with Jenny Lee's trust for the parking lot immediately to the east of this building. This building will have seven dedicated parking spots, one of which will be an ADA handicap spot.
And you're going to have an ADA front entrance.
Of course.
Yeah.
Ramp up and an automatic sliding door. Want to accommodate those patients as much as possible.
Yeah, they have, they have space on that lot, so yeah, that's something they could.
It's a big lot.
They have a lot of space.
Your hours, hours of operation are different, so even in the evening, they'll have that extra space when you guys are done, so.
It was very complimentary when we looked at our business timing.
Okay. Any other things from the comments, questions from the commissioners?
Would, would we be able to address the, the use tonight and have you do some research on what would be an appropriate way to regulate the number of electronic signs and address that later? Or do you have a suggestion on what would be the best way to do that now if we wanted to go that way?
Staff could look into that just to provide possibly a little more guidance because we could try to hammer out something this evening, but, you know, we, we might need to do some more research on that.
It's hard to, if we talk about frontage, it's, there's, we don't have lot sizes, frontage amounts to, you'd want to develop something that was then able for a number of different lots to be able to do this, if it made sense, if you look at the, the frontage. I can see the relative frontage amounts for the lots, but we don't have any idea if, if they're 100 feet wide or 65 feet wide or 125 feet wide.
It would be hard to come up with a formula tonight. Could we specify allowing monument signs or if, for electronic signs and then work out the formula later? Does that, is that helpful if the commission wants to go that way? And would that be helpful to you?
It's my understanding that for the city of It's my understanding that for the city of Geneva, I will have to submit a separate sign permit application along with my full building permit. So, the approval of the electronic sign is not a rate-limiting step in our development. It is also my understanding from the building commissioner that having an approved use within the approved uses of the zone for the property is a rate-limiting step to his approval of the building permits and his approval of the project steps necessary to go on prior to the installation of a sign or signs. So, if possible, if we could secure the approval of the use, the approval of the sign or the review of the sign, potential approval of the sign guidelines could be held, you know, off to the following subsequent meeting, because nothing with respect to our signs are going to happen in the next month.
Yeah, you have some work to do yet.
Yes, sir.
And everything, so yeah, you got a ways to go. Yep, John?
Could we, if we address the use tonight, would it make sense to hold the hearing open with respect to the sign portion of it and come back with some more information at the next meeting from city staff, so we're not restarting that whole process? Is that even possible?
Yeah, can you do that? Can you approve something while the hearing is still open?
Well, you'd be approving one component of it, because I, my, as I look at this, I thought these would be two separate motions anyway. This is not one motion, this is permitted use and sign. Could we address the permitted use and leave the hearing open? That way, if there's something posted to the website and public had comment, or we had wanted to go back and forth with you and/or the applicant at the next meeting, we could address those, formulate a recommendation and vote on it. Does that make sense? Is that?
So, I would say that these, these text amendments came in one application. So, the commission wants to explore the signage component of it, I think that we should probably just keep the public hearing open and not actually vote on anything this evening and just wait for the motions to come together as it did with the application in this public hearing.
Is there room on the May 27th docket for this to go before the other public hearing that's coming forth?
This one, I believe, would, if we carried it over to the 27th, this one would come first. I think it would go quicker than the second that we're expecting.
Is waiting two weeks, how does that feel to you?
So, during that timeframe, I'm expecting the demolition component of the permit to be approved. I don't see why that should be withheld pending the approved use, because we're not actually building, we're just tearing down.
Right, right.
So, in as long as Eric and the building commissioner are aligned with that, I personally, that's the only thing that would happen in the next two weeks, is starting the process, because that's what we're waiting on right now, is we're in the IPEA, the Illinois EPA 10-day required waiting period for the demo permit to be approved. They've been notified.
Okay.
So, as soon as that expires next week, then we're expecting that that demo permit would be approved.
Okay.
As long as that's approved, would be approvable without the approved use going through, waiting two weeks would not hold us up at all.
Okay.
Okay.
And this can definitely be item number one on the May 27th meeting?
Yes.
If we post, so that we're limiting how much time you'd have to wait for a decision on the recommendation.
Okay. All right, so if I make a suggestion, we just kind of table this at point, see if there's any public comment, and then we can pick it up again.
Can I?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Rebecca. Sorry, I was looking.
Okay. Is there a way moving forward to separate these two issues? I just feel like the sign questions are just bringing more questions. If we're talking about not a special use, but an entire, you know, zone change, if we're going to be doing more exploration or whatever, is that, is it realistic to put these, you know, keep these two things together for, to be looked at in two weeks?
Yeah, we were just chatting about that, and I don't think we've come to a consensus yet, Rebecca, so if I could make a suggestion, let's just hold off further discussion on this, see if there's any public comment, and then we can pick it up again. I'm not sure the commission's sure what direction they want to go yet, so if you permit that, let's just try to see if there's any public comment, and then we can pick it up. Okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know that this is one application, two separate requests, so I think what Chayton was saying is, let's keep the public hearing open, because it all came together, we're still going to be, I'm still anticipating putting forth two motions. So, there could be an approval of the use in May 27th, or a recommendation, or a disapproval, and there could be a separate vote and a separate decision, recommendation to city council on the signage, correct?
Yes.
So, to Rebecca's point?
Yeah.
These will be separated in our decision. This is not a, not an all or nothing game.
Yeah, they're two separate text amendments, so we can vote on them separately, that's not an issue. Okay, so, let's see if there's any public comment. There is no one here, so there's no one here waiting to comment on this issue from the public, so this is your time. If you are logging into us remotely, to raise your hand and be recognized for, any comments?
Chair, we do have one individual with their hand raised.
Okay.
Mr. Rodney Nelson, I will proceed to unmute you, and then you may proceed with your testimony. Rodney Nelson says that you are self-muted. If you'd like to proceed with your testimony on the, there we go.
Thank you. Just a couple things about this. B3E is a very small district, but there are still those of us who love it. Even though I'm not technically in it, my property adjoins it, and I'm also within 500 feet of 501 East State Street. Parenthetically, for Mr. Bush, you're not on the Lincoln Highway. The Lincoln Highway came up Route 31 and then went west for a few blocks until it got to Canville Road. So, it came through Geneva that way. So, if you want to be on the Lincoln Highway, you got to cross the river, which was the first thing I thought of when you mentioned your desire to continue the opportunity for people to choose independent pharmacies, is why not just move into Riley? But obviously, that wasn't an option. So, basically, I'd like to address, oh, one more thing before I leave this. Demolition in Geneva, we're lagging behind many, many, many communities that are in our same position, where we have a lot of old buildings with a lot of lead paint. We don't take adequate precautions when we give demolition permits, and that puts our children at risk. Most childhood lead exposure now is airborne, and this is something that we need to pay more attention to. Pour down the house behind the Dunkin' Donuts, I videotaped it, almost no precautions whatsoever. I mean, there was a garden hose that they sort of play that suppressing the dust, but the dust was enormous. So, I'd like to keep that in mind. The issue about, I'd love to have an independent pharmacy back in town. I think that the big players need the competition, just like the big grocery stores need Aldi. And as one of the last of the independent physicians that practiced in Geneva, there's a warm spot in my heart for the independent pharmacists who I worked with for all those years, including Mr. Riley. The other environmental issue that I wanted to raise relative to this particular site is that I think there's a misapprehension that State Street along this corridor right here is going to be widened. Originally, it was going to be widened, but as the years passed, the scale of the project went down and down and down, and the budget for right-of-way acquisition went down and down and down. So, there will be no meaningful widening of the street. 38 varies quite a bit in width, and I think one of the reasons why B3E exists is, this is one of the narrowest segments, it widens back out. You can actually see it pretty plainly visually at Harrison Street going east, it widens out some more. One of the big things in the comprehensive plan is to improve pedestrian safety along this stretch, and you'll notice at Harrison Street, the sidewalk, even though there's a school half a block up the street, the sidewalk is right on the pavement. You're walking down that sidewalk, and you're worried about being hit by a semi's rearview mirror, because they sometimes get that close to the curb. The other thing that I'd like to remind people about is, most of the money for the East State Street project is coming from a TMAC grant, from the federal government, and the acronym stands for congestion mitigation and air quality. And the major aspect of air quality has to do with improving the efficiency of diesels as they come through Geneva, because that's the major source of sub-2.5 particle air pollution that is particularly damaging to people with heart and lung disease, and also to children. So, to reduce that risk, you want to really minimize the curb cuts, and you want to do everything you can to minimize congestion. The current plan for the Route 38 improvement is to have a left-turn lane going westbound onto Nebraska Street. That left-turn lane will begin before Woodlawn, so there'll be no opportunity to make a left turn going east and then to Woodlawn. There'll be a left-turn lane onto School Street, but that would require going up to Summit and then back over to Woodlawn, and then down Woodlawn. Currently, there's no parking on southbound Woodlawn. People were asking about why B3E exists. I think the narrowness of the street is one of the reasons. The historic presence of those small early Swedish settlement homes that are just a block and a half west from your site, those are part of it. Another big part of it is, all these streets along this segment are substandard. The right-of-way of Woodlawn is 60 feet, and so is School Street, but the streets to the south are only 50 feet, and some of the pavement is as narrow as 18 feet in this neighborhood. So, the idea that having an access on Woodlawn very close to 38 is going to create, if that's where the drive-through is planned, that's going to create a risk of congestion, and that's the very thing that the federal grant is designed to minimize. It really is critical to the air quality, especially those who are north of State Street, because the primary windrows indicates that most of the exhaust is going to be directed into that residential neighborhood. Well, those are some of the reasons. So, that brings me back to the B3E business district. I did a search of Geneva's ordinances and municipal code, and the phrase specialty retail only occurs once, and that's in the description of B3E, which is to provide for a mix of specialty retail businesses and offices. It was not an accident that they left drugstores out of there, because the difference between specialty retail is very specialized, is they may have 10 customers a day, on a good day, like an antique store. We've had several antique stores try to make it in this corridor, and one is currently, I think, just now closing, one kitty corner from you there on Nebraska. The, obviously, the office uses are not a high volume, and if you look at your neighbors across the way and to the west, they're all office uses. The Munchy Peas is an exception, that's a fairly high-traffic place, because Munchy Peas has been fairly successful. So, it was not an accident that drugstores were left out of this district. It is only about seven and a half acres, it has about 22 parcels, if you count the right-of-ways of the streets, Nebraska, Woodlawn, School, et cetera. But it has some particular vulnerabilities that make even moderate use, retail use, undesirable, and also unsafe. Which brings me to the text sign. My goodness, the huge problem we have with distracted drivers, we ban texting from telephones, why in the world do we want to put up message boards to distract drivers, especially in a highly congested corridor with very little separation between pavement and the driveways? Seems very foolish to me. I was very pleased to see that your plan for demolition will preserve that early farmhouse. I agree with you, it probably dates somewhere around just before or just after the Civil War. I say that because of the little sort of eyebrow windows up above, and the two-over-two pane windows that came into use around 1860. So, that pretty well dates that building into that timeframe. We could try to get Mike Lambert to maybe give us more information. So, that basically, I would wish that you would not approve this use. I think there are many other places in Geneva where the congestion and air pollution risks would be much lower. The access would be much safer for both vehicles and for passing pedestrians. Remember that part of the East State Street corridor plan is to create a bike path, that's part of the comprehensive plan. This would work against that. So, there's a lot of reasons not to do it, and if you do do it, you essentially drive a nail through the heart of B3E. If you allow this, what would you not allow? Basically, any use. And I remind you again, specialty retail only appears as a phrase, as a descriptor of B3E. It's not an accident, it wasn't a scrivener's error that left drugstores out of this district. It was a well-thought-out plan when it was framed. The other thing I'd point out is, it's what a coincidence that happens to be in a TIFT district, that the best parcel along the entire corridor is in a TIFT district that will expire in about a year. So, again, I know that's not your business, but it does, when I look and see that construction or destruction has already begun before the first opportunity for the public to even hear about this or see it, tells me that this is business as usual in Geneva, and that you'll be successful. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other public comments? If you're online, please raise your hand if you wish to speak on this matter.
Chair, we have no other individuals with their hands raised.
Okay. Right now, I'm being told we do not have anyone, so I'll ask again, and we'll move on from the public hearing portion of it. So, anyone currently online who wishes to speak on this matter, please raise your hand on the application so you can be recognized. All right, so we're not hearing any additional people online. Set it back to the commission. I had a question for the planning planner, is, was there a reason why we didn't, or what was your rationale, rationale behind not having this as a special permit versus a permitted use?
So, say that one more time, for the sign or the use?
For the use, the sign, it was a separate matter.
So, that was how it was proposed in the text amendment that was submitted?
Okay.
To have it?
For the applicant?
Yes.
So. So, you know, from my perspective, again, given the layout of this area and the restrictions and the adjacent residential, I have not looked at this B three E special uses, but to me, this would be one typically, it's going to have a drive-through. It's going to have some other use impacts on it that might be something the Planning Commission want to look at before we approve it on this corridor. So given the size of the lots and adjacent residential and the fact that the street is going to get even more restrictive in terms of its size, so you're going to be dealing with really small lots. So given that, we at least get a chance to look at it before it happens. So that's just my only take on it. Yes, yes, sir.
It's my understanding that the drive-through would require a special use application that would be separate from the application to actually establish the business in the location. Our current plan would have us attempt to establish the business up and running within the summer of 2021 timeframe and allow us the opportunity to wait for the subsequent approval of the drive-through, which based upon the calendar timing of a special use permit, wouldn't occur until late September, early October, based upon how it's been outlined. So I believe the ability to approve or not approve a drive-through lane is still within the purview of a special use permit, even with our existing plan and with the existing proposed amendments.
Is that the case?
Yes. So the applicant does plan on additional text amendments to facilitate the vision of Geneva Pharmacy.
Is actual, yeah.
Yeah, so this is just the first step of fulfilling the vision for the business.
Is that the case in the entire district where the drive-through is recommended or is it just this use?
So in, in the B three E district right now, drive-through is not a special or permitted use. It's not listed at all.
Well, I mean, that, I mean, for me, that's, that's the biggest thing. And it can be packaged in with signage and other things that we can consider along this corridor. So I think there may be uses in here that could be permitted where it's just not, you know, something that can happen that really we don't need to look at. Maybe an antique store is a good example of that. But that's sort of my take is that I'm a little hesitant of just allowing it without review, a site review.
Even if it didn't include the drive-through?
So that? I think so. I think definitely drive-through, but.
Yeah, well, that we've already got, it sounds like.
Definitely, yeah, it sounds covered, but I think, again, it's just getting tighter in this area. So, I mean, once they build the road, it backs up the residential. It's a tight spot. You know, the parking requirements, it's probably going to have to be walk or some special conditions that, you know, like he's set up with the restaurant nearby to allow people to access the business. So that's just my overall, I mean, I just think from my perspective, that's just a reasonable way to go.
If we were to do that, what would that mean for Mr. Bush's timing on his project?
So can you just clarify exactly what, what you just proposed?
I think, I think for this use, and there may be other ones within the district that, but certainly this use, that there should be, that should not be a permitted use, that it would be granted under a special permit. So, you know, I'd be interested what the commissioners think about that, but that's kind of the way I feel about it.
It's certainly something to think about, and since we're going to, it looks like we're going to continue the public hearing so that we can get some more perspective on the electronic signage. And as far as frontages and scale and whatever the thoughts are between the applicant and the city staff, this gives us some time to think about whether that use should be permitted or special.
Yeah, give the staff some time to look at the uses that are in there and whether there's, you know, a need to do a special permit on some of these uses.
So I guess I'll just ask one question. What, what about this use does the commission feel that it needs to be a special versus permitted? I guess I just, I just want to understand the thought process behind that so we can get some direction.
I think for me, it's accessibility to the fact that it's going to be, in many cases, elderly people trying to access the site, so making sure that that's safely provided along a very busy road. Also, in terms of the, the ability of this, these, these facilities, again, it's a lot acquisition and could be a bigger pharmacy, they tend to be. As he stated in his, in his presentation, it's an anomaly, right? To have these small-scale pharmacies in the United States. So I just, I think on this use, it's just to be for caution at this particular location. It might make sense to have us as a special permit.
And so there are other uses allowed in the B three E that could theoretically do what we feel a pharmacy could do, and that's why the idea of the special use permit is appealing. But if you have a specialty retail, and I can't think of one specifically, but a hobby shop, potentially a hobby shop could come in and acquire an entire block and build a massive hobby shop on it, just as, you know, just as a pharmacy could, or this drugs and cosmetics store.
I think that's also more in terms of, helps to give us some additional protection on trying to have reuse versus rebuild. But obviously, they got to get through a special permit. The first thing we're going to ask is, do you look at repurposing the building rather than tearing it down? So if that's a goal of the district, given this, given the constraints in this district, that it might make sense for us to do that to help us get a better outcome. Again, that's just my initial thoughts. I just wonder what else, what the commissioners think about that?
Well, and one more thing, the depth of the district along State Street, I don't know the exact depth, but estimating it to be between a hundred and maybe a hundred and fifty feet deep, which, you know, would not, I mean, that doesn't provide a lot of space for a massive redevelopment, you know, because they have residential zones directly behind them. So just another thought for, you know, the scale of what could be redeveloped in this
That's a good point. This is one of the smaller lots, actually, so. But, but you're right, the depth with current setbacks from street and side yard would make redevelopment pretty prohibitive, I think. But for the drive-through, Chayton, would this desired use require a return or any kind of approval? Unless, you know, I'm assuming there's no, they're just redeveloping the existing building. Are we going to see this again? Except, we will see it for a drive-through, but anything else, is this, if the permitted use is there, is there anything, any other reason this will come back?
So as part of, and Mr. Bush, if you want to jump in, just let me know, but as part of this concept, there were a couple steps the applicant was going to take to make this possible. So the first was a text amendment for the sign and just the pharmacy use in general. And then, to my knowledge, the applicant wanted to come back to also have a text amendment to include a drive-through as a special use in this district. And then the actual special use, since that drive-through, if it were approved, or that text amendment were approved, the special use would also be requested at that time. So those are two independent application or sets of applications right now. Because as Mr. Bush indicated, he still wants to have the pharmacy there and then, and up and running. But then the, the drive-through would be an additional component added on potentially in the future.
So the answer to my question is that if, if the permitted use or the use is granted and/or the, and potentially the sign is granted, that's, there's, there's a path to opening this pharmacy here.
That's correct.
And it's probably six months to a year off before we're addressing a special use to see how the business develops, what type of use that, you know, is there a need for the special, for the application for the special use for the drive-through?
So our current plan, so again, I'm employing the pharmacist, I'm employing the technicians and the delivery driver already in Lombard. We're servicing over a hundred patients in Geneva here out of Lombard every week, bringing them out, delivering for free. So I want to get the store up and running as soon as possible because those patients don't have another viable option closer to them. Our current plan would have us submitting, because of the approval process, as I understand it here in Geneva, for the special use approvals and the timelines for staff review, et cetera, it would have me submitting the special use permits within the next thirty days, with the outcome being a potential final decision by the city in a meeting, I think when we mapped it out, it would be the last meeting of September or the first meeting of October, depending on how many review, you know, comments were received, et cetera. But the submission, I just wanted to be clear, the submission of that application for the text amendment change to allow special use drive-throughs and subsequent, the special use permit application for the drive-through would be flowing in, under our current plan, within the next thirty days to begin the review process.
To staff, and this body would see it in the fall, probably, yeah.
Can I ask?
Yes, Rebecca.
Why? I was just curious why you didn't put all of that together if that seems to be such an integral piece of the plan, the, the drive-through. Why not submit it all at once?
Yeah.
Our, our goal was to have the pharmacy open as quickly as possible to service those patients in Geneva who do not have another option right now for their, again, there are limitations to what plans, what coverage the chain stores provide, especially the prescriptions that Riley transferred over to CVS. There are some of those prescriptions that CVS isn't able to honor, the insurance that those patients have. They have no other options, so they're coming to us in Lombard and asking us to fill those prescriptions. So our goal was to try to service the community as quickly as possible by opening the store, hopefully in midsummer in July, and then allow the process for the approval of the drive-through to flow naturally through the system with a, hopefully, anticipated approval before the cold weather hit and before the inclement weather hit of the winter, you know, where the senior patients and where the patients with mobility issues would really need the drive-through more than at other times. So that's why we separated them out into the two separate stages so that we could begin to service the community as quickly as possible and still allow eventually the opportunity to hopefully provide the drive-through to them.
Going to continue?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing to May twenty-seventh to address these two issues.
Okay.
With the anticipation that the city staff will have some additional information on what was discussed tonight.
Do you have enough information?
Yeah, I think we have some direction.
Okay. All right, I have a motion to close the hearing.
Evan, second.
Wait, go ahead. Are we, are we closing?
Not closing, I'm sorry. Extend it, I'm sorry. Extend the hearing to what date is it? Again?
Continuing to May twenty-seventh.
May twenty-seventh?
The next scheduled meeting.
Next scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission. So extending the public hearing on both these items to the twenty-seventh of May. Motion by Mead, seconded by Mim. Celeste, please call the roll.
Okay, Evans.
Evans, aye.
Halloman?
Halloman, aye.
Matuskill, aye.
Mead?
Aye.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
Okay, that passes.
All right, so twenty-seventh, we'll pick it up again. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so additional public comments, I got to bring that up because I got remote, so is there any other public comment? That's the next item on our agenda. If there's anybody online who wishes to address the commission, this is your opportunity. I'm hearing there is not anyone, okay? So this other business, what else we got on the store for us to come up?
Well, nothing this evening, but at our next meeting, the scheduled for May twenty-seventh, we will continue this item. And we will also, we also have a public hearing scheduled for the proposed wireless communication tower on Randall Road for Verizon. Notifications have been sent out for the public hearing. A balloon test was completed on, I think it was May third or May fifth, Monday. So that occurred, we did get some pictures that will be included in the packet for review. We have received some public comments thus far. So it should be, it's a pretty popular item, so it should be a pretty lengthy public hearing for, for that item, so just be prepared. I think that's it for that application.
Okay.
Any questions on the Verizon tower?
I have a question. As you receive the public comments, could we get those sort of ongoing so it's not such a huge packet all at once or?
Yeah, we, we can definitely do that. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Additionally, the Malone Funeral Home has submitted an application for a special use and variations. They are fine-tuning that application so that it's prepared to be brought before the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. So that should be arriving in the next month or so. And then additionally, we have a property at the northwest corner of Old Kirk Road and Reed Road that is seeking to be annexed, and they also have a comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning upon annexation and a special use associated with that project. The special use is specifically for land banking parking. They have enough space for all their required parking per the square footage of the building and the use, but they actually only, they don't need that many parking spaces, so they're requesting to land bank that, which is a special use.
Okay.
Wow.
So.
Be interesting.
I haven't heard that one.
Yeah, and this is the same, it's a semi-truck repair business. I believe that this was brought before a concept review to the commission about this time last year, I believe.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I think the land banking component was discussed, but, yeah, they're, they're also getting through their application right now, and again, just fine-tuning that, making sure it's prepared for review by this body and City Council.
Anything further on the proposed development north of that that we looked at a couple months ago?
Let's see.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, this is.
At the car wash, gas station project just north of there, so.
So we have not heard from the developer. So we have not heard from the developer on that since then.
Okay.
So...
All right.
It wouldn't be a planning commission meeting if I didn't ask why Dunkin' Donuts is quiet again. They go fits and starts for 60 days. They do. They do, but I don't smell any coffee.
It just wouldn't be a planning commission meeting in the last six months if we didn't talk about Dunkin' Donuts.
That's right. It's going to be a great addition.
It is. It's come along.
Very close.
But they were going to open in the fourth quarter, so. And they got to the one point where if they had no activity for six months, you guys could pull their permit, and they got very close, so. I hope they pick it up again.
Opening soon.
Okay. Anything else? All right.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thanks.